...court to Grimes County, Texas, to order. It's Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. It is 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and we're located here in Anderson, Texas. At this time, we will have, we'll all stand and have Commissioner Dobieinsky give the invocation.
We bow your heads and pray with me. Thank you, Father, for this day. Thank you for the wonderful employees we have in the county. Guide us as we make these decisions this morning in this meeting and protect our first responders and our military, as they are placed all over the world, protecting us and giving us the opportunity to serve our constituents in this capacity. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Our county judge is absent today, so we'll move forward at this particular time with public comments. And do we have any public comments from the floor? If you should like to have a word, we ask that you limit it to two minutes, please. Any public comments?
I do have two announcements tonight. Next Wednesday is Special Olympics at the stadium in Navasota, starting at nine o'clock. Also, Friday night at St. Mary's Catholic Church, there is a gumbo supper. Any of you who want to have some good gumbo, come out and join us for gumbo.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? If not, at this time, we'll move forward with consent agenda items number three and number four. Consider and take action to approve the treasures list of claims and bills and consider and take action to approve payroll. Please note the changes on the payroll. Is that correct?
If there are no questions or comments, I move to approve consent agenda items three and four as presented.
Second.
Okay. It has been motioned that we approve consent agenda items three and four. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on now to Emergency Management Coordinator David Lilly and Precinct One Commissioner Chad Mallett. Item number five, consider and take necessary action to approve the replat of King Oaks subdivision, section four, block A, that combines lot 31, 1.20, I mean, 1.02 acres, lot 32, 1.02 acres, and lot 33, 1.12 acres into two lots to be designated as lot 31-R, 1.53 acres, and lot 33-R, 1.63 acres. Mr. Lilly.
Yes, Commissioners, again, as we discussed earlier in the public hearing, this is a replat in King Oaks, much like many of the ones we've done in the past, where the property owner's getting ready to build. The one unique aspect to this one that we've never seen before is, instead of combining the lots all into one large lot, in this case, the property owner's combining the three lots into two lots. Again, it's just a different way of doing it, but it provides with more than enough adequate space, exceeding our one acre minimum for development, and both lots to join on to Albert Drive.
Okay.
I move to approve the replat of King Oaks subdivision, section four, block A, combining lot 31, lot 32, and lot 33 into two lots, lot 31-R and lot 33-R.
Second.
All right. We have a motion on item number five. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to item number six. Consider and approve the grant application resolution between Grimes County and the general land office for the Hurricane Harvey local buyout and acquisition program and authorize county judge's signature. See attachment number six. And Mr. Lilly.
Yes. Couple of points of clarification on this application. First off, the official title is buyout and acquisition, but what I'm recommending to the Commissioners, once we go forward and submit the application, is that we only do the buyout. The difference between the two is, a buyout is where the county buys the property from the property owner at the appraised value, the pre-Harvey appraised value, and the property owner must then vacate the property. I believe it has two weeks to vacate the property, and then we're responsible for coming in and removing anything that remains on the property and basically turning it into green space. The result is, the county owns that property, but the property is no longer developable. In other words, it's not taxable. An acquisition is where all the other processes are the same. The property owner accepts the offer and then vacates a property, but then the property can be developed under limited circumstances. And the problem is, is the areas that we're looking at doing buyouts, these are areas that heavily flood, have had a history of heavy flooding in the last five or four flood events that we've had. And any development, I believe, would be putting public safety at risk. So recommending that you consider only the buyout aspect. Another point of clarification, the application itself, we got an extension on that to the end of April to be able to complete the application. We do not have to specify all the locations on the application that we're going to be doing the buyout with, but I am working diligently to develop a survey of all the eligible properties. And once I have that complete, I'll submit a copy of the report to all of the Commissioners and to the judge.
Okay.
The amount that we have currently available to us is just, it's basically rounded to 1.5 million. I asked GLO if we end up with more property than what we have enough money for. Is there more available? And there should be a second round, but we would have to do this in two phases, or however many it would take, probably two phases. And we also have to factor into the cost, the amount that we have to spend, the cost for demolishing and removing anything off the property, too. So we have to kind of consider that as we go forward.
Okay. Now, I heard you say you're recommending this be a buyout only and not an acquisition program. Is that stated in this resolution? Or, yes, it is. So are you recommending doing changes to the resolution as presented?
Or is this just the name of the resolution?
It's just the name of the resolution.
And then we can go through?
Yeah. It doesn't, the name of it doesn't drive what we do with the money, but the application does. Whatever we put on the application, we have to state what our intent is.
So is the wording that's on the resolution requirement of the grant?
This is, I asked the GLO for a sample of the resolution, because first time we've ever done this type of resolution, and this is the template that they sent me. Basically, I added in or changed, you know, the wording to wherever, you know, for city, state, county, or whatever, changed it to county, county judge, Grimes County, and so on. But the template itself is pretty much exactly the same as what the GLO sent me.
Yeah, we can approve the resolution as is, but on our application, we actually just put the buyout.
Right.
Okay. Now, my question to you yesterday in the item, I mean, number six bullet point, you said this is between the city of Todd Mission and the county governing. That, I asked you, does that limit it only to Todd Mission? This particular?
Well, limits it to the county and Todd Mission. The city of Iowa did not have any homes impacted, city of B-Dies. And also understand, when we say impacted, there are three primary criteria that the homeowner has to meet eligibility for, to be considered for the program. One is, they have to own the home, of course. Secondly, the home has to be in a defined flood zone or a zone. And then third primary criteria is that they had to have had impact and provide proof of impact from Harvey. Usually, an application of FEMA suffice. And in the cases of Iowa and B-Dies, within the city limits, there were no homeowners that met that, because there's no flood zones in either one of those two cities. There are around the surrounding area, but not in the city limits. Todd Mission, of course, has flood zones that run through some of the area within the city limits, particularly in Mill Creek Estates. And then, as you had asked about, there is some areas, I believe, in Navasota that also has flood zones. But that's how we determine as far as which cities would be participating. Todd Mission indicated they were the only ones at that time that were willing to, or interested in participating in this, yet that they would actually take responsibility for any property within the city limits that is bought out.
And some of these properties are located right outside of Todd Mission, right outside of the city.
So would that include the unincorporated areas in this particular resolution that you're doing?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Yeah, but the unincorporated areas, if any, that we do the buyout for, would become county property. If they're within the city limits of Todd Mission, then they become city property, but the basic criteria is still the same. It's to be restored to green space and no longer developed.
Well, since we have the city manager of Navasota and also Chief Kukowski, who's also been working with this program, do we have any properties that may be considering the buyout or the acquisition in Navasota?
We're not interested in that program. There's, the things that we took into account was, if you buy these out at pre-Harvey values, probably they don't have enough money to go buy a new home, and then you demolish their home and they have nowhere to go.
Right.
So our, that's our take on it. We did not want to do that, and we also did not want to accept any more maintenance.
Okay. Under the city, any more maintenance. Okay. I just wanted to be sure that we were including, this is countywide, and wasn't, I'm not sure if it's just, was just limited to the city of Todd Mission. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
We had the opportunity, but we chose not to go there.
And another point I want to make also to clarify, when we're talking about properties to buy out, we're looking at primarily two types. A residence, which could be an actual brick and mortar house or a mobile home, so I'm not, I'd break it down further on the list that I'm building, so that indicates if it's on the appraisal district as a mobile home, I'd list that. But basically, I'm calling those residences or vacant lots. With residences, if it's repairable, this program's not for these folks. You know, there's a separate program that the GLO started, and I had an article that's coming out today in the Examiner that discusses the two different programs. The homeowners assistance program is designed for individual residences or homeowners who had impact from Harvey, but their home is still repairable, and they just need additional assistance to get it back to livable condition. This is for residents where their homes were basically destroyed, or they wish to relocate off the property. Like, if it's a mobile home and they can relocate the mobile home, then we'll look, that would basically be, we'd be buying their vacant lot, and they would have to move the mobile home off the lot. There's a few there in that situation. So that's, to make sure we clarify that. There's probably going to be a lot of interest from this, I'm sure, once the people start reading the article in the paper and start getting the word about this. And I just want to make sure we clarify these particular points on who's eligible, as far as homes that can be able to participate in the program.
So is this requirement, or is this optional? Are you going to, are you going to go in there and kick people off the property?
No. That's a good point. Appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner. We do have the option, as a county, to use eminent domain. I strongly advise you not to consider that. I do not believe in that myself. If I really felt that a person, a particular homeowner's life was possibly in danger, then I will do everything in my power to try and persuade them to accept the buyout, but homeowner can say no. They don't have to accept the buyout either.
The 1.5 million, is that strictly for just buyout, or is that repair also?
No, not for repair, but it's, that 1.5 million is for the entire program, which includes the buying out the property, paying for the pre-Harvey value of the property, and then any demolition or cleaning of the property, it has to be done afterwards.
But it's strictly for buyout and acquisition, that 1.5?
Yes, not for repair.
Yeah, are there any other questions?
I have one question. If the landowner that has a house in one of these properties, and they choose not to be bought out, when another flood comes, are they going to be eligible for FEMA money?
That's for the federal government to decide, but I'll be honest with you, if they have had repeated impact and they had an option, it's very likely FEMA will tell them, we can't help you. They have been telling people that, where if they had flood impact and they didn't have flood insurance, they get one chance, basically, and if a subsequent flood hits them and they find, FEMA finds evidence that they did not obtain flood insurance, FEMA turns them down.
And we don't have a map of the properties that would be impacted?
I'm building a map. The two, there's a couple of primary areas. The biggest area is Mill Creek Estates, and that's one of the areas that we've surveyed pretty thoroughly, working with Neil Wendell, he's here from Todd Mission. Also, Ren Fair, Ren Fair Drive, there's a couple of areas down there where flood zones cross over Ren Fair Drive, and they could potentially be eligible. And then there's some pockets of area just outside of B-Dies.
Is there a form that these property owners would sign indicating that they understand that this is not a mandatory deal, that they don't have to move, if they don't want to move?
I'm honestly not sure about that, but, you know, throughout that process, you know, if, once we approach homeowners about this and they have questions about it, we'll be making that point clear to them all the way throughout the process, that they do not have to accept this as an optional program.
Mr. Neil?
Yes.
Glad to have you here this morning. You are a city manager from Todd Mission. Are there many properties in your area that you're concerned about?
There are several properties that we're concerned about that may not be eligible, just because of the fact that they have a home on them. But Mr. Lilly is putting together that map right now, but there are two to three homes within the city limits that the property owners have expressed interest in this program, that they flood, they flooded repeatedly, and they kind of like to move on, and we don't want to have the same. It's a mitigation issue. It's to not have these problems happen consistently, happen again over and over. But we are trying to find out if we're able to apply this to some lots, because in the flood zone area up there, we have about three streets and cul-de-sacs that are vacant lots that are now understanding water after the Harvey damage and how it redirected Mill Creek that we'd like to make undevelopable.
So at this particular point, y'all are not sure that it applies to just green space, just lots? Is that what I hear you saying?
Well, actually, to clarify that, again, that's a question I asked the GLO, can we use buyout money for vacant lots? And they said yes. Again, as long as they meet the criteria, the property owner, the owner, the person owns the property, it's in a flood zone, and in this case, since they didn't have a home, they don't have to provide proof of Harvey impact, but they have to, it has to be in a defined flood zone. And then also, the, for vacant lots, in most cases, there's nothing to remove, but we're trying to target the vacant lot option towards areas where they're not, there's no potential for development anyway. And Mill Creek Estates, historically, I've looked at that for quite a while now, and historically, when it first started out, it looked pretty promising, but over the years, especially the bottom right-hand corner of Mill Creek Estates, has become a swamp. In fact, it's platted, and it shows roads that are actually, if they're there, they're underwater. Now, it's assumed they never built them out. Neil actually told me about it, at one point where he went out there, and I guess you had high-water waders on or something?
Had waders on and went out there, and there's still asphalt under there. There, it's built as designed. There's three cul-de-sacs and one street that are completely about a foot to six inches underwater, depending on how recently it's rained, but it's always standing water now, and there's not really anything we can do with it.
So as far as any possibility of buying vacant lots, if we go with that option, that's the area I would encourage us to consider using money to buy vacant lots, is as a part of that overall, converting most of that area, particularly on the north and east side of Mill Creek Estates, where most of it's undeveloped anyway, allow that to be, to continue to do what it's already doing. It's turning into a wetland.
Mr. Mallett? I know, go ahead.
The city manager pointed out something about maintenance. Who would maintain all this property?
Well, maintenance, I heard what the city of Navasota was talking about with their lots in the city. That's, that's an issue that, you know, within the city limits, you know, if you have an active city like Navasota and you have a vacant lot, it starts to, you know, if it's not maintained regularly, it starts to look unsightly. And in the case of, like, in this area, Mill Creek Estates, it reverts to a wetland and green space, there really is no maintenance. Once we clear the land off, there's nothing to maintain except for fire, you know, like we do with any, you know, vacant land. There should be some type of, you know, clearing of land periodically to reduce the fire hazard. But it's basically, a lot of it's already, it has trees on it still, and most of it never was developed, so it's basically wetland and forest.
But not all of it is in Mill Creek Estates, is it?
Not all of it. There's a few areas in Lake Holly Hills further south. In fact, the holdings that George Colom has is actually technically eligible. I seriously doubt he will want to take a buyout for his property, but that falls within that area, and he did have impact, so. But most of that area, and again, we're not just looking at that area, but that's the one area that was most heavily hit by basically all four flood disasters that we had in 2015, 2016, and 2017.
So you say that we've been given an extension through April?
April 30th, yes, sir. To submit the application.
Would that be time enough for you to get a map together to show?
I'm almost done with it, yes.
All the properties?
Yes, sir. And again, that's not to say that all the ones that are mapped are necessarily going to be eligible, because what I'm looking at is simply what households are within flood zones at this point. I do not have access to the data on which homes applied for FEMA aid after Harvey. I do have my own list of homeowners that were impacted, and I'm comparing that with my list, but there may be others that'll come forward that'll say, yes, I had impact from Harvey, and I'd like to apply for the buyout program. But we are going to look at that very hard, because it's, it'd be hard for me to really understand how we could have missed any homes that were considered destroyed at this point that were not identified already. And that's the criteria. They have to basically be non-repairable to be eligible.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the grant application resolution between Grimes County and the GLO for the Hurricane Harvey buyout and acquisition program and authorize the county judge's signature.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Dobieinsky and Mallett to consider approval of the grant application resolution between Grimes County and the general land office for the Hurricane Harvey local buyout and acquisition program and authorize the county judge's signature. All of those in favor?
We're going to have some discussion.
If you'd like.
Yes, I'm, I'm not comfortable without seeing a map of the properties, and I'm also not comfortable without seeing some indication that the property owners are aware that they don't have to participate in this program, that it's, it's a choice. That's my comment.
I did publicize that, and it was included in the article that's coming out today in the Navasota Examiner, that this program, this buyout program is strictly voluntary.
Yeah, it is a voluntary program. I mean, they can choose to participate or not.
Okay. All right.
You had a motion and a second. You, I don't think we can vote.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and put it to a vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. We have three in favor and one opposed. Okay. We'll move on to item number seven. Human Resource Director Lucy Pope, consider and approve the revised Grimes County performance evaluation form.
Commissioners, this performance evaluation was given to you to review, and if you approve it today, then I'll go on and send it to the department heads and elected officials to be used this year for their performance evaluations.
This is the same evaluation form y'all reviewed in the workshop, is that correct? Or last week?
No, 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 no. This performance evaluation was given to me by Mary Ann Sands when she was here. And the one last year, I received quite a few, you know, telephone calls from elected officials and department heads, and it was very repetitive, and it was a seven-page-long evaluation form, and they wanted to see if I would look into, you know, receiving another one that is shorter, but yet still, you know, that could, did the performance evaluation on their employees with. And this is why.
Did Ms. Sands come down for the workshop?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking about. Y'all went over this. I wasn't present, so.
Right. She went over performance evaluations, yes. So if you approve this one, then we will go forward with it and use it this year.
Okay. Is there any discussion on it?
I have a question. Let's see, which evaluation form are we going with?
Okay, it's the, it's this one here.
That one with the seal on it?
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I move that we approve the revised Grimes County performance evaluation form.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. It has been motioned that we approve the Grimes County performance evaluation form. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Lucy.
Okay, thank you.
We are now up to item number eight. Grimes County Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy Todd Green to discuss and take action to approve the interlocal agreement for Grimes County to sponsor the city of Navasota on the BBWAX radio system. See attachment number eight.
Good morning. This is a, you know, summary of what this entails, is a interlocal agreement between Grimes County and the city of Navasota. To sponsor the city of Navasota the partnership on the BBWAX radio system. What this does is allows them to access the radio system and be able to put their radios on the system and allow not only first offenders between the city and the county to communicate, but also with the surrounding areas that are on the BBWAX system also.
Okay.
You know, as y'all are aware, that there is a fee for each radio that goes on the system. This agreement states that the county will be initially billed, and then we'll submit reimbursement to the city for the actual number of radios that's designated on the system. Now, it's dictated in the budget once a year, so throughout the year, if there's changes, that doesn't change. But each year, there's a radio count that is taken and will be charged and billed accordingly to the county.
Okay. So the city of Navasota would be the associate party, and we are the BBWAX partner. And so in section, I think, two D, it discusses the annual reimbursement from the associate party, which is the city of Navasota, to be paid to the BBWAX partner. Do we know the number of radios?
Looks like they're going to be approximately 90 radios.
Approximately 90? Okay.
For the city?
And currently, is it, are we doing, it seems like we're doing this mid-season. Oh, is it, is it mid to the end of 2019 midway? Are you Thomas?
Well, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Okay, please.
Okay. So what we do to allow the different entities to go back and have time to do their respective budget process, we actually work on the fiscal year for, like, say, right now, we're working on the FY 1920. We'll actually set that budget in April, and Judge Vouth is on the governing board for BBWAX. He'll, you know, everybody will review that, and then they'll vote on that, and then each governing board representative takes that back. You know, in this case, Judge Vouth would take that back to your budget process. So what we do, I have the inventory throughout the year, the inventory count, but from time to time, you know, radios either break, or, you know, one of them might, might not get installed in a vehicle that was intended to be installed in that vehicle, maybe that vehicle got transferred or whatever. So at this point, what I'm doing is taking the input from all of the different partners, call station Brian, Chief Devin here, and compiling that into the number that will be used for FY 1920. So what, what the city of Navasota's doing, they're going to come in midstream, but they're also going to be, there's going to be a transition period where they have to get the radios installed in dispatch and fire trucks and police cars and all that. So that's going to take some time to do. So we just, we just put them in at the beginning of FY 1920.
Okay.
So you won't actually see an invoice that reflects their count until the first quarter of FY 1920.
Okay, that's, y'all currently don't have those radios. Is that what I'm understanding? Okay.
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Thomas Gilbert. I work for BBCOG. I'm the radio system manager for Fresno Valley Water Area Communication System.
Okay, so what I think I heard you say was, we have time. This is all being developed for the 2019, 1920.
Right.
for the 2019, 1920 budget season. Although we're in the middle of the 1819 budget, they won't receive an invoice, we won't receive an invoice till after this budget goes into effect.
Correct.
So we'll, we'll have time to know what that amount is, and then at that point, I guess the city, between the city and the county, there'll be, although we add you today, there'll be reimbursement at that time. I was just trying to get all the, you're following what they're saying, okay.
So what will happen in this case is we will know by the time the governing board and the operating board meet in April, we'll know exactly how many radios they are going to have on the system. That'll be included in the count along with everybody else's, and the way we do it, we figure out how much, how much maintenance and operation is going to cost for that year. We do our projections, and then we divide that total number by the total number of radios that everybody has, so it's an even, you know, like this, this, this year, I think it's $23 a month per radio. It fluctuates every year, the trend has been coming down because we've been adding more people, more agencies to the system, so the trend is actually coming down every year so far. But, so you'll actually have those numbers in April for what to expect your invoicing to be for the FY beginning October 1st.
Okay. So currently, right now, we have approximately, according to conversation?
Two hundred and nine.
Two hundred and nine, they're being billed at 23.68 a month?
I believe that, yeah.
Exactly, 23.1.
How much?
20.31.
$20.31 a month per radio.
So 209.8 radios at 20.31 is current.
Correct.
And then, once you figure out that everybody's on the system, that amount goes down according to the number of?
The trend, the trend has been to come down, Chief Deputy's got my, my budget form, it shows the FY 17, 18, the amount was $23.68 a month, and then FY 18 to 19 is $20.31 a month. Like I said, the trend has been coming down, obviously, we won't have the final, if, if one of our vendors comes back with a price increase, a substantial price increase that overrides the amount of extra radios we've put on, the number could go up, but generally, the number's been coming down for the last several years.
Okay. So there is, I asked this question yesterday, there's no limit to the number of radios that can be added under the partner?
Correct. It's, 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 it's an operational choice for each agency, however many they need to put on to be able to operate day to day.
And these are for 700, 800 radios?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And we have two representatives, if I make no mistake, that you told me that sit on the operating board, which is Mr. Lilly and yourself.
Correct.
Okay. And all of this then goes before the governing board, which County Judge Vouth?
The operating board will discuss the budget and look at, look at different things in the budget, adjustments, then it gets forwarded up to the governing board, and the governing board actually approves the budget.
Okay, all right. Were there any other questions?
I'd like to point out in two E, it does say the associate party, which would be Navasota, will continue to own and maintain its own radios.
Okay. So Navasota is purchasing and maintaining their radios?
Essentially, they're, they're actually getting the same, the same radio donation that you guys and the volunteer fire got a couple of years ago. What I've done is I've gone to the other BV Wax partners and said, hey, as you replace your radios, would you agree to, to give your surplus to the cog? And then I go through and I rehab them, and they don't all make the cut to go back out on the street, but a good number of them do. And in those cases, you know, it's a huge cost saving. They're going to get, what, about 85 or 90, I think, was the number. Those radios cost between $3,000 and $3,500 to buy new each. So that's a huge cost savings to be able to hand them that, just like we did with Sheriff's Department and Volunteer Fire, and get them on a, a much more robust regional public safety system. And then they can start factoring in their budget every year, okay, we need to replace five radios, or, okay, we need to replace just one, whatever. But that gives them a way to get in without having to have a huge capital purchase.
And this is going to be for fire and law enforcement? Okay. And it also, on your end, includes the constables?
Yeah, and on our end, we have the constables, Todd Mission's currently on EMC as the radio system. DA's office, the two investigators are included in there, so, plus all the private department. I will add that the interlocal agreement has been in the works for John C. and the city, so they've been passing it out the last couple of months.
Would you like to contribute anything to the conversation?
Absolutely not.
Well, you were given the opportunity.
Stand for approval, don't let them know.
Okay. So are there any other questions? Any, any from the auditor? I think you had concerns.
Well, I spoke with Chief Green before it started, and he said for the SO and law enforcement, they've got 103 radios, I believe it is. And then I need to get a?
Well, that's going to be our new count, is?
That's going to be your new count, okay. And then I'm going to need an accurate number for the volunteer fire department?
Seventy-two.
For all, eight of them?
Yep. That's including handhelds and mobiles, that's also including 22 that have not been installed yet that are handheld on standby.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement for Grimes County to sponsor the city of Navasota on the BV Wax radio system.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Cox and, second, from Commissioner Mallett to approve the interlocal agreement for Grimes County to sponsor the city of Navasota on the BV Wax radio system. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, could you stay a few minutes?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you have a business card, Chris?
I did not bring any with me, but I can.
I can get ahold of you, I know where you're at.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to item number nine, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge's signature. We have Chief Kukowski right here this morning, what do you think?
I think we're good.
We're good? Okay. All right, I hear that as no action needed at this time. We'll move on to item number 10.
I move to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.